Call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Do your own call. I mean it.
Susan Austin.
Here.
Eric Miller.
Present.
Kevin Russell.
Present.
John Semler.
Present.
Angela Duvan. Here.
Will everyone please stand for the plausible reasons?
I stand to America. To the Republic, for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can't take it from this thing. She's right there. She's right there. Don't you worry, sir. Under control. Kind. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There is one. But I add that we should take the agenda on our presentations, the foundation of Parkland, to show that Parkland is happy.
Okay. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, so we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? Alright, seen you all. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. Changes are adopted. Moving on to item number two, approve of the consent agenda.
I would make a motion that we approve consent agenda consisting of item A, minute meetings from the August 12th, 2014, regular council meeting, claims including expenses for the town, revenue for the town, and utility fees; C, consideration of temporary street closure requests from the American Legion; and D, a considerate proposal for the Whitestown PD fleet lease program.
Okay, I got one question. The American Legion says that temporary street closure will be approved. And on the form itself, it could be addressed by any clarification. It says, makes it appear as if there's no reason for it not to be approved. Is that what this is going to happen?
Not, not, not the way I want to work with that. I don't think they have any intention of these streets to be American.
Well, the way it's from already is that the boundary is going to be on the street. It would have to be on approach downstreet. I would vote, how long it comes on, this is basically about.
Like I said, they, they don't want to put that in there apparently. I haven't expected that. More of this as well.
From my knowledge, all they're doing is just closing it down for the green tree so that they can have their area before, I think they're going to have a K. And kind of confine, confine the area for the emergency building establishment. That's what kind of what it's for. Maybe that's considered for a longer time.
One bit, or maybe they're banned, they were considering.
They're massive here. They're massive now.
Yeah, they're considering having a ban. So.
Okay.
They're accordingly on a ban. They're accordingly on a ban. Beer tent. Having excise. A die.
Having excise.
There. And, uh, I think that's a, I think that's a bonus. I think that's a step up from the past. And, uh, a little more. Alright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Close enough. Consent agenda is about. Uh, moving on to the next item on our agenda. Has anyone from the public signed up to speak tonight? Yes. I don't have any questions.
Jason, anything anybody could sign in for us?
People sign in without, not to speak as well. Oh, no. Okay. If anybody would like to bring up something that is not on our agenda, discuss it, that is here from the public, this would be the appropriate thing. Is there anyone interested? Uh, we'll move on to the next section on our agenda, department reports. And, uh, does anyone have any questions on any of the written reports?
I have none.
I think, uh, Mr. President, save some time. Jason has things on presentation that I can present here during department reports. And that's just really unnecessary projects. If you'd like me to do that now, I may have a presentation, you can do so. It isn't bad to me. Wayzoo Art Treatment Plan is certainly in full build at this point. If you go out there, it's a completely different site now. Concrete's been poor, gas has been poor, walls going up, force lane being, been moved around, all over town actually. So that's on schedule and going well. I heard any of you drive out, take a peek, so you understand what you've improved and what's happening, it's going to be good for the town. And great areas in the long term. Apparently with the road, you can actually see the road. I've kind of cut, cut it in. I may need Ben and Jason to help me here. What's going to happen is that the intersection of Max Drive and Whitestown Parkway, which is going to be the intersection, apparently with the road and Whitestown Parkway. You know, kind of being approved at the same time the road is being approved. We have November 1st, was that the reconstruction, where the construction beginning was? Their, their deadline is November 1st to have that stop lighting. It's a road flashing, the warning, the most that exists. Still on schedule for, um, we'll be able to drive when I read, soon, soon after. So much progress, much progress there. Um, the, uh, what am I missing?
Ride-in.
Uh, let me, let me explain that again. So Crane Drive now is a ride-in only. It will not be closed. It will be a ride-in, enter only. That nerve will be smoothed out, it will be curved toward there. That'll be grass. So we'll leave the Maritza, crack the road, drive down to, I know a council person, a center called Max Drive. I've never seen that.
Cracked down.
A lot of people call it center.
It's on the end. The one that we heard came in sicko is Max Drive.
You don't want anybody to find that, especially if you say the opposite of that. Um, that'll be your, that'll be your exit. So that'll be all approved with the improvement of the exit. So we won't have anybody turning left. Very dangerous center drive left anymore. We'll be done with that as a civilized intersection. No, no, we're on the Zionsville. It's going to punch that street through. There's going to be a lot of things to do for that around us. That I do believe is probably going to be a player that can be a great addition. And that gets completed. So. There, we have, uh, taking bids for 750 and 600, for the payable 750 and 600, 750, um, south, and 650 east. We're holding off on the 750 because we're going to be playing the force lane tent. We don't want to be in that town that everybody loves. Put some ice paint down, and we cut down, and we fix the cut. So we, we'll hold off on that portion. I do believe we're going to try to do 600 before day of view. So 600 is probably a worse shape than, than 750. Coming out to some of the light in the middle of the day, just because we're really treating the wishes. But I said that there, I asked them to announce this.
That's awesome.
We're doing a lot of work ourselves. Saves money on time. Uh, the utility buildings, we're still working with, still getting appraisals in for the co-op. We have two more coming out. Give you a better update on what's happening with utility buildings. Obviously sitting in a building which I hope everybody's starting to pay to work from the church aside tonight. That was their part portion of the close. Our portion of the closing is in the morning. Close the bonds for this in the morning as well. And, uh, it's a great addition. We'll, we'll take possession on the 20th, 21st I guess. And then we're taking it to 10 days to move, that's why their stuff is anywhere. So we'll get possession, I guess, on the 21st. Hopefully in the transition plan, I guess, amount of staff, October 20th to October 31st, to be operating. Probably have a lot to do, we'll go into new construction wise and security wise and, some of those items. The plan is in place, we're ready to go.
I have one question. The center drive turning south into the Maritza and startups, is that going to be whitening for semis when they're done? Because there are a lot of semis and they're always running at her. That will be whitening at the entrance.
Yeah, both feet is plenty wide, it's just a matter of how those guys engage. Drive they do.
I understand people can't read, they don't have a turn sign too. I'm just hoping that it's whitened so they don't make a difference. Okay, I guess that was my only concern, since they always keep a red up because it's on that right, on that inside link. Thank you.
Do you, do you know the timeline on the November 20 extension?
Uh, April. April I believe, because the asphalt plant was shut down, the bridge has to be built. I think it's April. Uh, which is another great project, it'll change, especially for those residents who live in Long Far, they were north of 500 south. Certainly give them a different access point. Also, as part of that completion of that project, that allows, if it's deferred money, it's already in the year mark. I don't know if I'm allowed to use that word anymore. The service is pledged towards the upgrade of 400 east on the south. That intersection comes together, so it'll be a free flow, um, onto the Maritza. So there's a couple of different laws that will draw up to that project. So you'll continue to see after much progress and bridges start to come in, around preseason, um, the August 20 extension. That's all I have. Next on the agenda is the clerk treasurer report. Are there any questions? Or does the clerk treasurer have anything to add? Alright, moving on to the next item on the agenda, presentations. First up is an award presentation to Officer Bowles and Officer Batts from the Indiana Mag Chamber.
Council, it would be a proffering that we'd like to move the A to the bottom of the list of this presentation. Officer Batts, Officer Batts is tied up. He was on his route to wait here and stopped to help the stream of motors on I-65. So he's running a few moments later. It's okay, we'd like to move that to the bottom of the presentation.
That's fine. I'll look to him when he needs it. Okay. Next up is, next to Jason, presentation for Kramer Companies, Kate. Good you responded, okay.
Hi, I'm Kate Smith of Kramer Companies, and I'm grateful to be able to come and present to you guys tonight. I'd like to introduce you to Dean Zolkowski, he's the owner of Kramer Companies, and he'll be presenting on our project delivery consultant services for inspiration of the town council. I have a couple of materials here for you guys as well.
I guess, it's not ideal for you. I'll, I'll ask you to speak on a little bit more, so maybe game on, you're up here. Okay, just start. I think this is worth it.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's going to feel like very nice, very nice. We'll get rid of the wires and ask you to depart.
Can you hear me? I am. Thank you, Council, my name is Dan. And, uh, uh, we had met with Dax on a couple of occasions, a lot of people up here that we know that have run about, and, um, uh, who are involved with, uh, several towns, schools, local areas, things like that, in helping in, in growth. So we met, presented the materials to Dax, and requested opportunity to come in front of the council and, and present to you our services. The first thing I, I'd like to address on the agenda you have in, uh, agenda in front of you, uh, our number one, um, budget, it always comes up, so we'd like to address it early on. The, one of the things that we like to boast about our company is that we are already in the budget. Uh, and we have a track record, this is a footage that proves it, and I'll show you how to do that later, and hopefully you'll have an opportunity to prove it. Uh, but it's the one key thing that, why do you, the council remembers, that our services 100% internal investment are already in the budget. Um, as far as what we do, we're a project delivery consultant. I know as representative, construction manager, general contractor, we're not of the, look, chances are you've not heard of what we do. We are your representative, but we are not a legal district. There are conflicts of interest that exist, uh, and we have proven, uh, over and over again, over the 16 years, that I've been in business, uh, myself, providing these types of services, that demonstrate that these kinds of businesses offer up a tremendous conflict of interest.
Can I interrupt you for just one second? You gave us normal copies of that chart. How about if you turn it around to the public? We'll put it off to the sides of the public. We can see on our hand, excuse me.
I'm waiting. Thank you very much, Jason. Thank you. As I, as I was saying, we're a project delivery consultant. What that aims is to, you're offering expertise, intellectual property, over the entire span of the project delivery process. What does that mean? Our primary objective is to offer transparency and accountability without sacrificing the quality. In fact, we improve the quality of your projects. Uh, our other objective is to maintain a fluid bond between all project participants, owner, designer, contractor, that needs to happen in order for this project to be successful. If necessary, reinforce our unique brand of, of project delivery by utilizing hand professionals from every discipline. So, okay, what is the value to you for the service? Thus, in the station, if you took a slice of the project process, the table that you have, we handed out to you, if you just turn it around here, is an illustration of pre-construction services. Alright, I'll walk over here. Can everybody hear me? Okay? Am I speaking loud enough? Uh, there's a dark line down approximately, uh, two-thirds of the way over, uh, to the lever line. Uh, there are one, two, three, four projects to the right line. There are also four projects. The construction values are on the top line. Uh, some of these values have been verified, some of them are estimated, estimated because the project has become fruition. You move on now, pre-construction services include environmental, survey, design, geotechnical building agency approvals, then award, all awards that you should be familiar with. Construction administration is included in the municipal project only. It is an architectural engineering project, and construction administration was included in that project. The other projects do not include construction administration. Uh, I would also like to make the point that, to you, that during the design phase, the, the professional that you use for design, uh, we do, we recommend that if they are not utilized for the construction phase, it will raise a conflict of interest, and we have reutilized other professionals for the construction administration phase. Do have checks and balances for what the design was, what the contractors doing. So, uh, that is the construction administration phase. The next line is the fee, uh, verified estimated, or verified as actual, the estimated fees for each of the projects above. And then the next line, the total line, is the percent, everything that we view, every study that we do, is as a percentage of the construction value. Uh, what is the percent of design on construction value as industry standard for engaging what you're paying for a project? The design fee stated at the bottom, as you can see, left of the line, left of the line is with Kramer, right of the line is without Kramer. Councilor asked us to do this study. They wanted to know what value we were offering to them. So what we did is, we did a public record request to them. This is public record information, or information that we have, that we're actively, actively involved in the projects. The percents below, the percents as B are a 80% of the construction, the construction value. So, uh, left of the line, we've got 7%, 5%, 5%, 5%. Right of the line, you see, they were paying 15%, 45%, 11, and 28. This information should be verifiable for you now, today, if it sounds like you have a lot of projects going, you should be able to verify what your construction value is and what you paid for the pre-construction services. If you can get to these numbers that we're talking about, which is an average of 5.5, then you go to the level services. I can say that you're doing a good job. If you're, if you're, if you start creeping above the 5.5% on construction administration, and creeping up closer to 10, 15, and some of the numbers that you're seeing to the right of the line, then I can help you. We can help you. We have helped you. This is how I own behind them, by understanding this in great detail. In the packet you have, there is a, there is a list of services that I provide, that my company provides, it's a very detailed list, and very comprehensive, and it will be great to have. Down below, uh, is the, in the red, is the green, uh, the estimated cost savings based on Kramer Bean's resident is at five, currently at $5 million. The premium they paid when we were out there is at $2 million, and total savings is at $7 million. And this is just pre-construction. Uh, we, we again start to move into the construction administration phase, and there, and we illustrate the same enormous cost savers when we move into that phase, and then we have services that we provide during the construction phase equally as that. Our cost savings for our clients is in excess of $45 million, uh, as of 16 years this year. This circles us right back around to, okay, how do we get paid? You know, first of all, we, there are three options about it. We're hourly, we get paid hourly, or we get paid on fixed fee, or if you don't believe what you're hearing here, if you follow my references, you don't believe what they're telling you, then we have a shared saving. And that is, if we take a project, let's go with, uh, the Max Drive, this is the small one, you build us that project, we'll take a look at it, if we can't help it, we'll tell you. If we can't help it, we will. If it is a shared saving program, in this particular instance, $5 million, that check is $2.5 million to pay. Obviously, Town Rowver is not on shared saving program, but I'm going to be standing here. When they first engaged us, Kramer, they did put us on a shared saving program, uh, on the municipal project. This was eight, nine years ago, 2006. Hit the little project, Town Rowver approached me and said, hey, do you mind going to a fixed fee arrangement? It's a much better deal. This is all verifiable with the references that we have in there. Uh, it's brief, there's testimonials in there, there's articles that have been written unsolicited by us, we don't advertise, we don't advertise all of this. So, um, everything is as clean as it can be, um, in its work. That being said, it's a short, sweet presentation. He'll get your questions and I'm hearing them.
One quick question, you mentioned fees and everything. What about, uh, as far as timeline? Are your projects coming in on time or delayed?
Projects, they are, we want them scheduled, and I can't sit here and tell you, they would be irresponsible to me and say, I'm going to break your projects in on time. If I don't have the appropriate controls in place for your project, notice I'm going to come in on time. If I have control of your project, and I, you will know to the day we, when that project will finish.
So if we wanted you to, could you take a look at some of our old projects and potentially tell us what you would be able to say about, what you would have been able to say on that project?
Similar rewards on the board, absolutely, yes.
Okay, so we can do sort of a review of the content?
Yep, absolutely.
Is there an active small project? There's so much going on, I can't keep track of all of them. Is there such a thing as a little, do you have any little projects? Like, I know, I know that sounds silly, but, does Dax have a small project that you want to take a look at? There has to be a reason to broaden here.
Uh, I miss my mic. No, there isn't. I didn't have a specific product in mind. If people come and ask me that, those are the products that we may want to hear about, suggesting, um, maybe, it's not, not being small, I have to go and defer. I, I do think it would be worthwhile to look at some of our old previous projects, see what the savings put up there. And then let's, uh, let's have another discussion. Thank you for grabbing any, we appreciate it. You? Yes. Alright, we move to the award presentation, uh, to Officer Bowles and Officer Batts at this time. Council, thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Lay Hill from the Indiana Mag Chamber.
Hello, thank you, Chief Anderson. My name is Layle Hill, and I'm in the Victim Services Specials for Mothers Against Drug Driving Indiana, and I serve victims across all 92 counties. These victims, unfortunately, have either lost their lives, and I serve their families, or I serve victims that, um, had injuries as a result of drug driving crashes. And I wanted to speak to, not just you today, but the community citizens, all of you guys out here today, and let you guys all know that each of you are integral, integral part to the work that we have had, uh, to you every day to eliminate drug driving and support those who are impacted by drug and drug driving. Uh, this is very important due to the fact that, on average, two in three people will be involved in a drug driving crash in their lifetime. And every two minutes, a person is injured as a result of a drug driving crash. And every day in America, another 20 people die as a result of drug driving crashes. These people are children, parents, spouses, neighbors, community citizens, and... Uh, these people are children, parents, spouses, neighbors, uh, community citizens, and lots more people who died from a tragic crash that is preventable. Uh, I come here today to let you know, we at Mad are here to support the public employees and representatives with whatever we can do to eliminate drug driving in this wonderful community of Whitestown. Uh, with that, we have a certain campaign that we use, uh, to support our law enforcement officers. That is supporting full funding for law enforcement. Um, Mad supports law enforcement and urges federal, state, local, and tribal governments to provide the funding necessary for them to be effective in fulfilling the traffic law enforcement portion in their mission. Uh, in addition, we also support sobriety checkpoints and high visibility enforcement. Mad supports the frequent and regular use of highly publicized sobriety checkpoints and other high, uh, visibility enforcement programs to detect and apprehend alcohol and other drug-related drivers and as a visible, it serves as a physical deterrent to drink and drive. And studies do show that with sobriety checkpoints, DUI rates, um, or I'm sorry, victimization dramatically reduces as a result of sobriety checkpoints. Uh, the goal of sobriety checkpoints is not necessarily to catch someone drinking and driving, but to serve as that deterrent. Most people say that they are less likely to drink and drive if a sobriety checkpoint is out there, so. And then next, um, I, um, understand that the police departments in central Indiana has had some ups and downs recently. Uh, however, we really want to take this opportunity to let you know how much we appreciate the heroism of our police officers around all ninety-two counties in Indiana, including Boone County. Not many of us are brave enough to tackle some of the most difficult and dangerous situations that our police officers do day in and day out. And for our local law enforcement personnel, we thank you for all you do to protect and serve in community, our communities, which also includes keeping drug drivers off our roads. I want to give around, uh, square of Whitestown. Uh, our police officers risk their lives every time they clock into their jobs to keep our community safe. And for that, we here at Mad Indiana are very grateful for them. Uh, therefore, on behalf of Mad and all the victims and survivors we serve, I thank you all for, for the work that you do to support our initiatives in eliminating drug driving. So, see, we, you guys back here, so, um, and now I'd like to take a moment and recognize two officers for their outstanding achievements. We oftentimes have conservative citizens calling, uh, our state office about impaired drivers that they're upset about, but I was really excited to hear about some citizens in Whitestown calling, wanting recognition for their officers. And I heard something good come out of the phone, uh, that wasn't related to drug driving, it was related to, uh, some police officers taking initiatives to remove hazards from the road. Um, so I was raised with this phone call from a citizen from Whitestown. Uh, so the recognition of two, uh, Whitestown police officers, um, is what I am here for mainly today and I'm so proud to be here for that recognition of them. Um, these officers have arrested a combined total of thirty-seven impaired drivers in two thousand and fourteen. This is preventative strategies. This is quite incredible. So, um, I will begin.
Chief Anderson, hold on. Sergeant Bowles is not your correct?
Correct. Sergeant Bowles, uh, is a D P R E school, proper recognition, technician school at Fort Wayne and is unable to make it back down for us tonight, so I'll be accepting the award for him. Uh, we would invite President Miller and President Austin from the Police Commission to come down and, uh, for us to work with those and, uh, work that ceremony.
Sure, we, I want to let you guys know, we also provided a pin and it says, uh, Mad Hero on the net, so.
Okay. Oh, one edge first, okay.
Chairman Ryan Bass, you're, no, thank you for all the work you do. Apparently he was helping a citizen on the road on the way here, which I was very proud to hear about too. Thank you so much.
Ryan is also the senator on Town Vasco Team. The town servant in Vasco Team, yeah.
That's true. He just hired us.
I just want to say thank you again, Officer Bass, for all that you do and thanks, uh, to the Mad Checker in the end for coming and presenting him with that award. And thank you, Officer Bowles, sorry, I forgot, since, since he's actually not here in person. Um, next up on our agenda is a discussion of the I sixty-five X one thirty interchange.
Okay, uh, do you hear me okay? Um, Dax and I, Jason, we've been meeting with Indot, actually for several months. Uh, we met with them last, they suggested, uh, we once again ask them to do something with the interchange, exit one thirty, Whitestown Parkway, I sixty-five. Uh, they said, come up with a plan and then meet with us and then we'll think about funding something. Uh, originally, we had talked about a single point interchange, which is something like that, is rebuilding the entire interchange. We're talking somewhere on fifteen to twenty million dollars and that would have to be funded, obviously, through Indot. Um, they did give an example that Greenwood came up with ten million dollars of their own money to, uh, fund a, uh, to fund an interchange, uh, and we thought, well, we're not there, so, uh, thought we need a different, different plan. So what we've done, uh, is come up with this plan, I'm just going to go through it real quick with you. Uh, the two problems we have is getting people off sixty-five as they head northbound on the Whitestown Parkway, mainly as they turn east. And the second problem is coming from the east to the west and getting them on southbound sixty-five or northern. I'm sure most of you drive that every day and see that problem. Uh, so what we've done here, if we're taking the bridge, the bridge from inside wall, the inside wall is seventy feet. So we've taken that, like, six or five twelve-foot lanes on the bridge. Um, there'll be, to solve one of the problems, as you come in the morning and head east or westbound on the Whitestown Parkway, turn southbound on I sixty-five, there will be two lanes turning left. And the other thing that we're going to do is we're going to create this, a complete turn, left, and it's, you continue on, don't stop. And this right-hand lane, as you head eastbound on Whitestown Parkway, will be a, a, always go lane, it won't stop. And in the middle there, you can see some of the, uh, highlights right here, there will be a large, uh, there'll be a center curve right through there with these delineators. Uh, the delineators we're talking about, you see them over here on the Whitestown Parkway, this piece of, uh, seventy. And what they, what they do is they force people to keep going. Um, I don't know if any of you have been on an interstate interchange where you come up to the interstate and there is a lane for you to go, but there's people coming at you, people tend to want to stop. Uh, we're going to try to stop that and then people continue to go. So we have full flow, right turn, and two lanes turning southbound sixty-five, and, uh, they'll eventually merge into one lane as you get in, get into the interchange. So that's the first problem. The second problem, uh, as I mentioned, is getting people off the interchange. So we're going to do kind of the same thing here. We're going to turn this into three lanes, one left and two rights. And the right lane will be, the two rights will be a continuous off right. We'll have a continuous green, uh, signal right here, so people, when they come off your bound, will continue going east without stopping. The, um, the west, or the eastbound traffic that comes across the bridge, right here, will come across and you'll have a left turn and a, uh, a left turn and a straight. We're going to move the people over the going straight into the left bound, the left turn lane after people turn left. So you'll have one lane going across the bridge, blur across like this, and you'll have, still have these two constant on or off ramps on the Whitestown Parkway. And they will eventually come down there and merge together as we get down and the signals way down to the east, but, um, all this that we've done, bless my mouse, but the only place that, uh, we're putting new pavement on is right there over Prepper Road is. Do you have a laser? Oh, going to add, get everybody, this is, that mouse is tough. Uh, the only, uh, the only part where we're going to do pavement is right here. All right, Dax has got it figured out. Right there, the only part of new pavement we got. And down here on the southbound lane, Dax, over here on the east or west line, right there, right there, that curve, where everybody's turning left, that's the only other place we've got new pavement. And if we're re-striking everything and on the bridge side, we're going to resurface that, so we don't have the joints, people will be confused on what plane, what order we're supposed to be driving. All of this is about one point six million dollars compared to millions of dollars for new interchange. Yes.
Obviously, there should be signaling.
There'll be, uh, reuse the signals when that heads.
Okay. My other question is the actual exit ramp for Whitestown. Right now, those that are opting to go east towards, or sorry, that come off the ramp to go west, are opting to make the exit off of the interstate in two lanes instead of one. Is that going to change at all, or how many message to those who turn west and then go down, they can actually go south, that that's not a two-lane exit, it's only a one-lane exit, or is that changing?
You mean the, as you go on northbound sixty-five?
As you're heading off the interstate and those that are going to the west, everybody's lining up on the interstate to go west, you have?
They'll only need one lane there.
Okay.
We can add another one there.
The line is now?
Exactly, because there is now, yes.
Because the, the challenge is, is it starts backing up, hopefully it won't back up with the continuous flow, but you give those people that are going sixty-five miles an hour, drive off at the end, because they're going west and you can watch exactly where they go.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that. Um, you know, Indot re-stripped that, when they first did that, they did it, they stripped it.
They, they re-strapped it to their way, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we, we weren't planning to do anything with that.
You didn't get it re-stripped it to make it back to?
And you liked it the fact the way it was when they first opened?
It was, everybody, and it was great because people knew that they were going west. I mean, it made it, and I know it wasn't really designed that way, it was just the way that they had to finish the striping, but it worked.
Yeah.
It was much better.
We can ask them about this, yeah.
Because people knew that they could go past that line and they, they didn't have to, there wasn't two arrows over there, but people made it too.
Well, it'd be nice if maybe they signed that so that people would understand that, because it is tough if you come up northbound sixty-five and get over on all those lanes.
It is. If they could sign, if they could sign it that the far right lane is to go west and that inside is to go east.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
Or, nice or something.
I think we could probably get some.
Because I almost got killed the other day by somebody doing that.
Yeah.
Because I was in line and I was patiently waiting in lines and I went to get over and they come flying off the interstate and I followed them all the way to where they go and then knocked it to dry. Was that?
All right. No, I, that's a good, that's a good suggestion. We'll, we'll do that. Our next step with this is to meet with Indot and, uh, see what kind of funding we can get from them.
I have a question, I, I have a feeling I don't want to answer really. I think, um, there's been, I think it's in, either the transportation plan or the parks plan or something, there was a hope that eventually we could have a pedestrian something across that bridge. That doesn't seem possible.
Well, there will be, uh, two five-foot shoulders, uh, you could walk on a five-foot shoulder or a bison. Uh, I don't know that that would be permitted, uh, but what we tried to do here is maximize what was already there and minimize the cost. Because Indot, Indot didn't only have it for a large new brand new intersection or interchange, and the town going out prepared to spend four million dollars.
And I, I'll just say from my part, I think the traffic issue is much more urgent and it, it needs to be done. I hope that if ever it is rebuilt in the future, that we still keep that connectivity priority in mind. I'm, I'm kind of disappointed that it seems like now it's planned, it could happen for a really, really long time, but, but this has to happen.
Well, I think this would help tremendously with the traffic.
My questions were along the same line and number, what you just said, uh, we, now to make, um, where you said the two five-foot lanes, would it be possible?
Shoulders.
Shoulders, I should say, I'm sorry, two five-foot shoulders?
Yes.
Would it be possible to, um, make it one of those smaller, like the other one you walked in, is that there was some pedestrian space?
I, I wouldn't suggest that. I mean, your, your minimum shoulder widths are either four or eight foot in width.
Okay.
Um, so I, five-foot shoulders are pretty minimal.
Okay.
You could go even smaller than that.
I, I like her, I, I'd love to see pedestrian, but it's more important we need to get the traffic. I, I'd like to speak to the next steps so the public can hear this. So I've written multiple postings on multiple Facebook sites and also written a memo that's on our webpage now that kind of explains, number one, this is mostly not Whitestown issue, it's an interstate issue. It is our issue because of growth, but it's also our neighbor to the east has caused this problem, but that's fine. It's not, it's not, it's not a negative, but there, Zaisel has no interstate interchange. Now that four roads close, they really have no interstate interchange. We're seeing what happens when that pressure gets placed on this very inadequate piece of infrastructure that Indot owns in our state. So we did have a good meeting with them, although we didn't have those results. So our engineers designed a fix for there is a new construction. I want to reiterate that a couple more times. Town said, hey, we need good partners, let our engineers review a solution to the problem. They now have to accept this. And quite frankly, we shouldn't be paying even half that. We said there's about two to three hundred thousand dollars of work in this, the action is an hour ride. And that's really what we need to do, a free resident here that has to deal with this issue. And granted, it's for about three hours a day, six forty-five to eight-thirty in the morning, five fifteen to six-thirty, six forty-five at night. Um, there are other interchanges across state that have much more pressure, but there are some projects that become a, is. But there are some projects to be committed, especially here in southeast of the retail area, that will cause, could cause even further major pressure to the interstate. So we need to continue to lean on our state senator and our state representative, Senator Booth, Senator, Representative Thompson. Call in if you can. We'll be going to them saying, listen, we have a pretty good fix here for a relatively small amount of money. Let's just get it done till the next year, so this could happen in March, April. May, we've got this at least temporary fix until we have to completely remove the interstate job in the area. That's, that's the next, that's where we are now. We've got, we've got to lean on our state partner to accept this and move forward with it. Okay?
Thank you to everyone for your work on this. I mean, this seems like a really immediate solution to a huge problem. I was expecting to see a lot, you know, the price tag would be a lot higher. This seems like we're really trying to get anybody, so good work.
We just have one quick, the public relations, one quick. This town has a lot of positives going on, a lot of people going to focus on that. Proud of those positives, we're letting residents coming in. I think you saw some of the emails I received at CCU and our response to those. Get the positive comments back, people moving in. And so the first thing we want to do is a new resident packet. It's actually, it's a resident packet area, but certainly will be geared towards those who are new. Uh, we don't want to do that in house, we want it to be as professionally done as possible. And we'll see, we'll see something later here in the meeting that's still... My colleagues, our associates have agreed to do the new package for us, it's very good. And it's about four thousand dollars. I think you'll like it. The, the, the positive for that project is that it claims, I'll have an example of it, like, uh, I think Surprise, Arizona was the one I gave them. It was a great package from Surprise, Arizona, on my website, it's a boards and commissioners packet. It's really, really good. It's not a printed packet. I'd say this is much more electronic, but it is a PDF type, glossy, printed, glossy, it'd be very high-end, I think, for a normal amount of money. We have, we have funds in our, our town insurance system. And I want to spend it, trust me, I think this is something we need to do. And our new residents deserve it, and that those who are looking at the town deserve it as well.
How will we determine where the new residents are? By water bills, by sewer? How do you determine who's in the neighborhood?
Well, you, you would be surprised how many phone calls and emails I get. I was just on the website, I was looking for housing, you know, my friend looking to move again. My husband and I are looking to move again, we get a lot of hits. Um, right now, there's really nothing but hot spots to sit in. The website's not exactly glossy. And I don't think this is overreach and overspend and under partner. I think this is something, other towns have something that was way better than we have with our growth. I think this is a good practice to have. The next step then to be able to do boards and commissioners packet, those are very, those are very good too because it tells the public, um, this is what you get involved in. And this is, this is how you get involved in what it means.
My question is more that we do have such a malaria that we were relying on strictly water sewer. You're going to miss an entire section of our growth.
No, I don't think we're relying strictly on water sewer. I think we're just trying to do this in mass, uh, mass communication through, especially in digital and social media. And we may do what we like, we do those from time to time, those are relatively expensive for the town to do. So residents will get information.
Again, there's, not everyone gets the papers.
We, we understand that. So for, for those of us who are some of those, I mean, like, there are people in the likes of Corl, that I've told them, I'll, I'll pay them a little bit of package to you.
No one in, no one in the western side gets any kind of that stuff.
Got you. That's, that's kind of the PR. I'm working with Rex right now, um, and he's done a very good job. High job. And he's putting together the PR.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Next up, I believe we have the parks on the relation. It's definitely...
Can we get that slide over there, Congressman?
I guess I can.
Stephanie, give us this.
I'll slide it, then I'll give it to Stephanie.
Good evening, Councilor.
Underpaw. Okay, try Eagles Nest, the first one, Eagles Nest, let's try and see if that... Okay, take the other one up, it'll probably be a little better for right now.
Bill?
Yeah. Okay, for those that are not aware, uh, Eagles Nest has built up to a portion where, uh, it was turned over to homeowners effective last night, in fact. As part of that, and you're just seeing the northwest corner of the Eagles Nest subdivision? If I can get to the slice of work. This piece of land here is approximately eight acres. It's not accessible from interior of Eagles Nest. Now, they could have given it to H.O.A., but it actually works better to give it to the town. We have developments, in fact, on, uh, Life Max Land Commission. There were two different developments that went to Berkeley, no, it was on a land commission. Two hundred houses directly in the west of this. And then Catty came on five hundred houses in a planned Jewish development, off time. We really had no land in the south portion of the town, no, no parkland. The developer was willing to give it to the town if the town was willing to accept it. And if the town talks, gave it to talks, we'll come up with some kind of plan. Now, as I asked, if it's been donated yet, it has not been donated yet because of timing for grants. The developer is turning over the rest of the subdivision, and he spoke to the residents about this last night. I'm not saying it isn't, spoke to the Eagles Nest residents in the H.O.A. meeting last night. He's giving the rest of the subdivision over, he's going to hold on to that piece of land. If somehow the town can't come up with some kind of thing, he'll end up giving it to the H.O.A. But it would be better to come to us. We could potentially use it as a grant match to start looking into it. Now, I'll turn it over to Stephanie as to what she has thought of some of the things to do with this piece of land. Stephanie, you want to take it?
Thank you, Ms. Roswell. And the Parks Department has come up with some ideas for utilization of this property. Can everyone hear me okay? Uh, some ideas of the... Some ideas, um, that have been considered would be a small parking area and a trailhead and perhaps a passive type recreational opportunities for visitors to enjoy with the addition of sidewalks along the perimeter of six hundred and also seven fifty, which will eventually connect to these future planned developments. Um, also native plantings have been discussed and perigrasmos under certain stipulations, heights and things like that. Um, but there is also, um, excuse me, uh, high tension lines that do cross the property. So there would be some clearance, uh, some concentrate, or excuse me, some easements that we could not access or go beyond, um, other than that, I believe. Ms. Roswell, is there anything you'd like me to add?
Well, one, one final thing. While the show is going to date one... While the show's at eight point five nine acres, it won't be quite that big. If you look, uh, that red line, it's kind of running perpendicular. They're going to stop there, there's going to be about a hundred foot common area behind you. There's lots right there so that the residents are not impacted by it all. And, uh, I, I actually should let the talks, let's talk about it.
That's correct.
We're, they're talking about, I wanted to invite residents to make sure that there's talk from them.
Yes, to have a public input session with the homeowners that are directly affected by this potential and hopefully happy donation so that they're involved with the process and find out what, any ideas that they may have, um, so that everyone can be involved and have input in this situation. Are there any questions? Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. So the board, you're delighted that you're going to present it somehow? Not sure, uh, I couldn't...
She, she owes you two, next guy.
Alright, moving on to our next item on the agenda, unfinished business. First up is a ordinance, twenty fourteen dash twenty-five, uh, on second, on second read. It's a consideration of an ordinance establishing a rental registration and inspection program for neighborhood preservation.
Well, as I stated when you read your first read, um, we were spending a lot of time, you know, at the TIFF and the Legacy Core and then some people hit that downtown Legacy Core, thirty years. And that has passed, it's begun, there's, there's business interests there, so hopefully revenues will start coming in and making big sidewalks and some storm and things with TIFF. Another part of this is, and this is, sometimes these ordinances are seen as an attack on a landlord that, you know, friends you want to ride with own a facility. Yet another, um, structural regulation had to go through, that's registered, had to be inspected over a couple of years. I'll tell you by experience, um, my father had to go through this, it was low to a yellow. He was held accountable for two years. The register, they, they come in, they tell it text, need to be done. So the resident had a healthy, quality place. We have residents in, in residences in the Legacy Core all over the town. They're, they're the same, they're all, they're all the same residents. Had it purchased by prospectors, being rented out, collecting issues with those particular homes. Those ones would sometimes start to fall into disrepair, especially if you have a very, if you live in one of those in California. This is a way, uh, not, not, it shouldn't be seen as so as a negative, uh, so much as it is. We, we want your resident rents your own living quality home, therefore contributes to the quality of the home around it. And it helps us maintain, uh, an economic viability, especially in the original town where a lot of these things are and in the neighborhood system. That's, so if you rent, if you, if you're a landlord, you would have to come in and get a permit to have a rental residence in our community, it's a cheap rate. And then every, I think the ordinance says over two years, Steve?
One every five.
One every five, so one every five years, which is pretty, you know, minimally invasive. We're, we're going to inspect the facility once every five years for a hundred dollars.
I'm sitting here reading the instructions.
May it.
I would make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen dash twenty-five, ordinance establishing a rental registration and inspection program. Second?
Alright, we've got a motion, it's in second, is there any further discussion?
I have one question, how, um...
I will take you over the microphones. You know, it's new, it's very, very new.
Just a question, how will we notify the owners of these properties? Do we know who they are? Do we know where they are?
You'll know, uh, one way you know is that the Waterville is a completely different name than the owner of the parcel. It's one way you can find out whether that's how it was done. And, um, in the neighborhood of Rhode Island, there's an area of such a presence in Wilmington, we were told to go look at parcels and look at names of people who live there. And that's how they did it, the neighborhood housing development, community development, we looked at it that way.
So it's just that our plan, you mean to...
Yeah, that's, that's the first, that's the first plan. There will be some that you won't know, and there will be some that slipped through the cracks, but we just haven't found them. Um, now, we're not, we don't want to be out there having a coven for some officer, be even strong on the law.
We just didn't want to find out that this ordinance exists.
What we'll do is we'll probably end up sending a letter off to all parcels owners that states if you are a, if you are a landlord, if you own this home and you are renting this home to others or a landlord, that you need to do this by a certain thing. So there's nothing wrong with... We have to promise this because it has to be done, so it has to be promised.
And it does apply to any entire town, you know, that subdivision, because its rentals are given a subdivision.
Applies to the entire... Where can I extend this? You're going to get pushback.
We're in counties to do this through code enforcement, uh, the Health and National Corporation, which is where I started doing that way back when. So this was a great, great tool to make sure that they were safe places for people to live, especially children with lead-based paint, asbestos and all the other things. So it's, it's really, it's a good step for our community to go with. And I know many don't like the idea, but if you're truly thinking of having to do, this is a must.
Any further discussion? Seeing all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of us say aye. Alright, up next on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance establishing a complete streets policy for the town of Whitestown, ordinance twenty fourteen dash twenty-six, and this is the second read.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen dash twenty-six, completes, an ordinance establishing a complete streets policy for the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Second?
Alright, so we've got a motion, it's in second, is there any further discussion?
Good work, Ms. Ross.
Dax, do you have anything to add?
It's all of us, it's awesome.
Alright, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed, say aye. Ordinance is adopted, second read. Moving on to the next item on our new business. Uh, first up, we have the public hearing of our, of our twenty fifteen fiscal year budget. And at this time, I will be opening the public hearing. We don't, Steve, we don't need to have a roll call to... The public hearing is now, is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak on that part? Proposed twenty fifteen fiscal year budget? Alright. Seeing that I'm not hearing anyone, we're going to close this public hearing. And at this time, we will entertain a first read of the ordinance, twenty fourteen dash twenty-eight.
I would make a motion that we read... Sorry, ordinance twenty fourteen dash twenty-eight, Whitestown, ordinance twenty fifteen fiscal year budget, ordinance of Whitestown, adoption, twenty fifteen fiscal year budget, my title, please. Second?
Alright, so we've got a motion, it's in second, to...
You text it, I don't have to make a...
I don't care, it's like...
Well, we're doing it.
It's a budget.
Do anything you want, even though it's wrong.
You got to do it, it's good.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed, say aye.
Okay, so up next, title, uh, it's, and I'm prepared for the ordinance twenty fourteen dash twenty-eight, ordinance for appropriation of the package.
Alright, that concludes our first reading of the twenty fifteen...
Alright, that concludes our first reading of the 2015 fiscal year budget, and as Julie said, it's on our website, if you would like to take a look at it. Moving on, next on our agenda is Letter B, consideration of an ordinance, amendment, ordinance 2014-23, and this is ordinance 2014-27.
I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2014-2017, amend an amendment to ordinance 2014-2013, and ordinance of the town council, the town of Whitestown, Indiana, regarding compensation for the utility billing and collection.
You'll need to suspend rules, you'll need to read it once.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules and read, have second read of ordinance 2014-27, and then the ordinance 2014-23. Second?
Alright, so we've got a motion that's been made to suspend rules, have second read, one second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the posts say aye.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2014-27, amend the ordinance 2014-23, ordinance of the town council, the town of Whitestown, Indiana, regarding compensation for utility billing and collection. I'll second.
Alright, so we've got a motion, one second, is there any further discussion? Seeing there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the posts say aye. Motion is adopted, and ordinance is adopted on second read. Next on the agenda is consideration of a resolution permitting beer and wine to be served and consumed in the new town community recreation events center at the new town hall complex, resolution 2014-25. I have free to this room, I'm sure I love that. The resolution isn't completed. We just got this overturned, I'm sorry. And I did kind of state this one ahead last minute, we can. This is going to be a facility that will be used, it's already been, I can't tell you what the locals have taken. It needs to be used in the right way, and I'm sure we will get weddings, receptions, Christmas parties. This is not intended to allow beer and wine to be consumed and served by us, although we do that sometimes. In this building, it's, I have aptly named that center, and I kind of did this on my own. Somebody else has the right name, the community, I very should have named that center. It will be cordoned off, you can use it without getting into the rest of the building through TFOB system and whatever. It'll be as open as a center, and so I would just propose that we consider in October, pass the resolution laws. At the same time, also consider that policy, through the place, prohibits the consumption and service of alcohol beverages in every other public space in the community for that. So that's the reason why it's on the board.
I would make a motion that we table.
I would make a motion that we table resolution 2014-25.
Second? Alright, we've got a motion, one second, in front of this guy. Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the posts say aye. Alright, I just tabled. Alright, moving on to Letter D, our business. Was it the other?
Sure, yes.
Is it?
No, it's the hearing.
Was it the other, okay, that's right. Consideration of a request by the Whitestown Parks Board and Parks and Recreation Board to approve the use of the town's facility. That's Stephanie, that's fine.
Thank you. And as the Parks and Recreation Department would like to propose renting the, how did that, the chairman of the community?
Community and Recreation Center?
Yes, the town community recreation and events center. We propose that it be utilized for rentals of such things as birthday parties, wedding receptions, Christmas parties, or holiday events, things of that nature. Please find attached to your agendas the draft that Steve Lumber put together for the event agreement. If you had time to proofread that, or if you have questions, we can discuss that. There is a clause in there, I believe, concerning the serving of beer and wine or liquor, which I'm not sure if that's something that will need to be discussed at a later date, but that's part of the rental agreement that has been drawn together. Do you have any questions at this time?
Is there a fee schedule that's been identified for this, or some sort of non-dishonored? The evidence?
Well, I think that you're going to find this maybe on a project-to-project basis. If there's a larger event, you're probably going to want to have security involved, have the event pay for that. If it's a smaller event, you know, a minimal fee, because one thing, what could happen here is, two of the people that have called me up are basketball, a homeschool group has called and asked if they could use this for their basketball. I see no reason why we would allow them to do that, and they're a small group, and because that, meaning of the building, will be secure from this wing of the building, they could essentially rent a TFOB, come in and use the facility. This is the police department as well, hopefully that would deter any long-term really crazy. And that fee could be something, just to be effective, keep the lights on and heating the AC. So it's more project-to-project, we can certainly submit and determine prior and show you a fee schedule that is, is this event, it'll cost, we think it'll cost this much, we'll put that together.
I had the same two questions, what are we charging? And I do think we need to make it clear to the public what the fees will be and what the criteria are, if there are different levels of fees, so it doesn't seem like we're favoring one group over another. And then I had the same question about security, it sounds like you're talking about building out a wall there.
You will not, you will not be able to get this portion of the building after five o'clock, if you utilize it that facility. You will not be able to get it. So, and if you do, like I said, there are police officers in one certain way, so you probably made a very poor mistake at that point. So, well, I think the security is a make-workout, you know, the kitchen, the wall will be so that you can use the kitchen with the bathrooms, and they'll be a part of that facility, which is why I named it something different. Yes, it's a part of our building, yes, it's a part of, I think you can see some of this stuff on the town hall complex. Makes us feel better.
I have one other question on the prohibition of food preparation and cooking. Well, it says unless otherwise expressed and intended in writing, so I'm just wondering what that's about. Is there some additional permit or something that's needed if people want to actually put food in there? Why would we tell them you can't cook, or do they need to get something else, is it a health issue?
We don't have, I don't think there's a food, there's not a food per se here, it's not a commercial kitchen. So you're on a caterer to be running, if you have a, if you have a major event, it's going to, we're required to be catered, you can't use our facility, because you can't, you wouldn't be able to, private health company.
I just had two other questions, first, being scheduling, and what would, if there's been thought about making sure that town, town functions would take precedence over other things, and any town departments, and second, where the revenue would go?
Those are excellent questions. Yeah, revenue, revenue is going to never fund. If, if it's a park, and what we've, the second I talked about is, if it's a park event, then obviously those fees would go on through their reverting fund, right? And they can, they can, they're collecting fees, they can collect, correct? And then the parks are just fully going to then taking fee, to hold that event in that facility, where are those fees?
I'd have to look at that, so the fallback is what we're going to be, the only way we're going to do it is if it were funded, it'd be appropriated by the county.
So there's something we'll have to work with, and you might have to somehow. You have to make sure our land is established.
We have some work to do on this, obviously, we wanted to make a trade over quickly, and there are multiple vehicles for the use of that particular portion of the complex.
How soon do you think the security will be established?
It'll be done prior to last meeting, and I know that it'll be, it'll either be one of two things, a permanent wall, if we have the funding to do so, or a accordion-type wall, name that already exists right now.
Is there any intent to contact the county convention and visitors bureau to try to put that space out for things like trade shows or stuff like that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll contact them, we'll work on the facility. Stephanie's bringing it's turn.
I'm going to move on. Are there any additional questions?
So Stephanie, are you asking us to make sure that we approve to read the rental, use of rental, or just?
Not necessarily approve, just put the first draft out there until we have the rest of these items in place.
Probably best since we've tabled alcohol reservation, since this set of alcohol is tabled, at least you now know that there is a draft out there, public seating draft.
Is there a requirement for us to approve something like this? In other words, if in between now and the next council meeting, you got approached by somebody that in December wanted, was looking at events plans, and you know you should be ready for them, do you need us to approve? Please write the report.
I would feel much more comfortable if you approved our resolution with this motion. Is it required, or no, probably not. My, our attorney has to say, hey, what are you?
You can give, you can give Dax a discretion to do and consume, to enter into agreement if you want to. You can give Dax comfort if somebody came in, that could call me up and say, yeah, somebody wants to do it before the next council meeting, can they do it? And I am sure we got to feel comfortable with the council that gave Dax authority to do that. So, one of the things, if you wanted to, we could go ahead and maybe approve this, authorize Dax to do it, with Stephanie, to enter into these, and substantially perform, maybe approve of this, introduce you here, and then you can come back and do more.
Somewhat. Second?
And that motion approved, I would approve both of them.
For Dax and Dax's Stephanie. Do you, well, someone did us a second.
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Presidents?
Do you know, what can we say?
Yes, we have.
You do, I do not have a favor to say.
I want to say it was eleven sixteen with no tables, and around the five hundred-ish mark with tables. So we can, we can have one of the heavy names. Yeah, okay. So next up on the agenda is Letter E, consideration of a request from the Parks Board to host those film movie nights in the town community center at the new town hall. Name there. I'll, I'll let you respond to that.
Uh, yes, the Parks Board and the Parks Department are requesting permission to utilize the community and recreation center, we'll get it right one of these times, to show our postponed movies that were unfortunately canceled due to weather events earlier this summer, or late this summer. And so we would just like permission to schedule those, and get back with you with dates.
I'd just make a motion that we allow the Parks Board to reschedule their movie night in the new town community center.
Alright, we've got a motion, one second, and any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the posts say aye. Motion is about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda, our other business. First up is the discussion implementing an employee wellness program. So, this is just strictly from a administrative perspective, we want healthy people. And a lot of us have recently started processes with healthier people. I think it's given incentive for a number of different things, it also has an effect on your insurance as people are claiming visits to ERs and doctors and all kinds of. You got, you have your, I've attached the program for you, I think it was, was it twelve thousand, I have it in front of me, I'm sorry. Twelve thousand memberships and. So here's what we do, we have forty-five, roughly forty-five insured employees, including the light officials. I put in there fifty. The program basically do is pay for a year, an annual membership. I chose Peckers, who acts very good, he's a great, he's a great president, wasn't he? His, his facility is in Stonegate, he's a, that'll be a new customer. I chose him just because, I mean, all the scores are, I go over there, I went to my wellness program, and he, and I got to talking about, hey, could you, could you do something for the town, the town is willing, and the employees are willing to step up and take advantage of it, so he does a sixty-day program every year, and of course, he's a big annual membership. It's nothing, it's nothing that's obviously, it's not a need, it's not a needless. Other towns have done this, corporations are doing wellness, the state government has a pretty big wellness program right now for employees, take advantage of. I just want to put that as something you can consider, you want to consider tonight. And maybe we can talk further about it in October with, in the management. It's there, the management, for a personal perspective, that's pretty low cost, and what it could save you in a minute's time, so. Something you think? Thanks, thanks. I think in general, wellness is a very, and if anybody else wants to come, just go right there.
Can you give us a little more, what the sixty-day wellness challenge is? I mean, a few years ago, Dennis did a challenge, and it lasted like three days, and we were going to eat it, so. I wondered if that kind of challenge, or a real versus challenge?
Well, they did the same versus challenge. He did, he did community access for people who are in well, in shape.
Yeah, less than three days.
No, this would be kind of geared toward your individual need. It's a three-day, a week, you can do it in three days a week, it's a point system, you're in competition, you have a goal, you start with a goal in mind, at the end, you're done, you complete it with points. And that's why I said the incentive would be, we pay for half of that sixty days, and if they complete it, the town will reimburse the employee for the full amount of the sixty-day program. So the sixty-day program is four seventy-nine, the annual membership is seventeen ninety-nine a month, and that's where the numbers come from. I'll just say again, this is a great idea, and it's really good to get in front of this, because, I mean, a lot of my fear, and the things that it does to the healthcare system, I mean, it's really important to, you know, to try to make sure employees have these needs.
So I have, I guess, a question, I also think wellness is a great idea, it's a great idea for town to invest in employees. I, I wonder about picking the place for them versus letting people pick their own program. And I guess my question is, what kind of place is it, what's available, you know, fitness-wise? Is it just a guy with a gym, his garage, like what, what is it? Is it something that everybody's, not everybody's going to want to go anywhere, but, you know, is it something that would appeal broadly to the employees, or is there an option to have people pick a different place to spend those funds?
We could, I was trying to symbolize it so that it's actually a program with somebody, I mean, the state does it, it's. I mean, the state does the nets, you can't go anywhere else without discount other than the nets. I think there's a reason for that, state doesn't have to be saying, check, Amanda probably doesn't wanna be writing, check, here, here, and here, and here. And another thing is, is that Peckers, the workout company, it doesn't have to be him, it's just somebody that actually does it, because he's right here. If our employees live here, you can, you can discount far drive, and later, and rival, that's some of our employees that the brands ever understand. We've talked about doing this in the gym. That might be difficult, it might require more equipment, but this is another thing that we could talk about.
Is the stadium facility?
Beautiful, so, earlier you had this W A turn in, first house on left is the workout. Three stories, you go there as well, it's very nice. This is another thing, because if you go with the one, you have the economies of scale, you can go to him and say, instead of twenty-four ninety-nine for employee membership, we're gonna, we're gonna offer you a possibility of forty-five. Can you reduce that to seventeen? So the economies of scale goes into play when you have one service provider. It's very, very much like we don't have fifteen terminals for fifteen departments. It's a similar current. And it's if we could talk about it, that's why it's on your agenda, to talk about it.
Considering the fifty employees now we're getting discounted price, is it potential to have a discounted family membership, the employee families?
Yes, he, actually, he, Matt talked to me about that after he saw my proposal, he saw this proposal, and he said, yes, I I wanna do fitness at the council. He talked to me about that, and he would, he would, he already had, say, family discount, and he said he would apply a different family discount for our town. Town would not pay for family, Matt would just be, be a discount by being part of the employees.
Thank you for being proactive and for carrying the burden, please.
I make a motion that we approve the Town Wellness Program.
I think we're just gonna bring it back next time.
I would suggest we, I would suggest we take it one more time, bring it back next time.
Okay.
We're trying, alright. Alright, we look forward to seeing the proposal next month. Next up is the discussion of adding Veterans Day the day after Christmas, that is, and all of it is. Let's take it away, guys.
I'm not trying to be off, because trust me, the third day I'm off, and I had three more days to catch up. We need Veterans Day off, none of them's off, I think so many of them is off. The state is off.
The day after Christmas.
We're working, we're working. The day after Christmas comes up because Christmas Eve is still a workday. I think the state knows the day after Christmas, I remember correctly, a lot of counties do the day after Christmas as well. You're up with your family until late into the evening on Christmas. There's absolutely no business on December twenty-sixth on Boxing Day. It becomes kind of anti-conductive, you can't turn the lights on. It doesn't add to the, we're still well under what most other communities have done, even the state gets paid holiday. We're still well under it.
We're still opposed to Christmas Eve, that's why we're surprised about that.
We were last Christmas Eve till five. Now, sometimes we'll all send an email, you know, county members send emails that county closes noon. I get that, it's not an official vacation day. You know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be easy to tell the day to stay here to five, but the official hour of the dark to five, Christmas Eve.
Well, I, I think adding Veterans Day is just an upgrade, because that's an important day.
At least, at least add Veterans Day, the other was just, I was listening to the feedback from the employees. Obviously, we can't do a vacation every time, and we're about something. It just made sense, and other communities do, we wouldn't be alone. State government does it, I think state government does it. Thanksgiving is the day after, and Christmas is the day after. We would not be regreting in order.
Do we, do we need a motion?
I think it would be best if you did, for the next, is that?
Isn't it for the, yeah.
What's, what's that? No, it's not, it's part of your, I believe, so it would, I would just have to, so I can make a motion and have those.
I make a motion that we update the employee input to include the addition of Veterans Day, and the day after Christmas is paid holidays for, for employees of the town.
Second. So we've got a motion, put second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say aye. Thank you, thanks for getting that in front of us.
We're guaranteed to have about twelve pieces of that, the day after Christmas.
So, what are you gonna say, we're paying overtime? Yeah, there's been a lot of time, it works so well.
Alright, next up on the agenda is an update on our points table.
We have worked our tails off. Lauren has worked her tail off, Amanda makes a help as well, she's very good at marketing materials. We had my associates who donated some time in effort to create a relaunch. Swatcher should work sure of this time, we didn't pay anything for it. It's behind you. This is page one. This is page two. Three is where the swatcher's levels are. And four is for contact. This is your poster. Now, the title sponsor is there, but not me. There's no money in yet, okay? We're just committed, right? So I say this very tentatively, Lauren and I have a deadline of tomorrow at five. So we're really pushing it hard. So Stephanie, I forgot to forget her, I mean, she's hundred miles a minute, so I'm Stephanie, sorry. She's working incredibly hard for us, so it's gonna be too bad, sorry, Stephanie. We have, I don't know, we're running out lots of time. Someone I have to remember this. So far, we have Full Tea, who's tentatively committed, Cagman is tentatively committed, TRW, HWC, American Legion, and two swatcher levels. True Temple. I'm missing someone, I'm missing somebody, other public, public cert, public safety group. I think so far, I think. I have, you have roughly, with no money in yet, that's fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. So we're only anticipating. But I'd like for you all to know, as you made a motion to hold this event, minus entertainment, I think, after talking to Hunter Smith, he's on there, like I said, this poster for the public is not, this is a tentative, lock it. If we get our entertainment, the state sponsor, we can certainly have it in there as well. Nice seven thirty to nine thirty, family show on Saturday night. I think that you all need to have a pass motion to allow us to inform that, because you're original for this one. Town resources and no verandahs or entertainments, I have hated before, but you can be a blessing to us. I think we're much better off right now, even though the money has been, I don't know, man, shakes a curtain over there, she's, she's talking about this. I think that Will, however, we asked really good, he brings us to this point. I think we'll be able to at least hold it to bear, because we won't hold it for entertainment till we know for sure.
They're still, I mean, emails are still.
Yeah.
We're still, we're still contacting people.
Four weeks out, four weeks out.
Yeah, four weeks out, it is early for checks, but if anybody has any corporate sponsors, they, they'd like us to contact, or you're comfortable contacting, let Lauren and us know, so we can give you the information in the sign up sheet, because we're, we're calling everyone we know. And everyone has to know somebody in a corporate business that would pay two hundred fifty dollars to sponsor a corner. Like a coffee shop, a car.
That's all I have.
So I would make a motion that, that we give Dax the authority to go ahead and book entertainment when he is secure that the funding is gonna be there to pay for it. Second.
Alright, so we've got a motion, put second, any further discussion?
Well, you've made a motion old, you've made a motion old, you usually made a motion old without.
Oh, that's right.
You added this, you're good.
Yeah, sorry.
Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, yeah.
I have one final, anyone want to thank Ed? He's still here.
Thank you, Mr. Savage, for helping out with the sound.
See you out there. Everything that's happened here tonight, from the sound perspective, to the internet, to internet issues in the Town Hall, he is fantastic. He donates his time, his talent in that area to us, he's not, hey, that's a guy. I gotta thank him every night, getting my sign, and donating his time, and everything especially. It's invaluable, and then, once again, I want to thank Tammy Kelly, she's been here once again all night. She's our broker, representing us with the sale, purchase of this building. And Brad King, who's the representative, broker, representing church, both, they're a great team. They've done a great job, they sacrificed a lot of time here, and we should be very grateful for the work of them, if we're finalized, I guess, we already have this coming.
Keep it up.
Thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Townman?
I have a motion.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need this third.
Thank you, guys, for coming.